My left is Lisa Normedin, the Board Secretary. Alfred Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, and Patrick Callahan. Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period, and if you would like to speak, you will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. This is a special permit for dimensional variation, and the certain findings, the findings are, the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such building alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of this special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of this special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, or other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicants are Scott and Nicole Kerewak, 32 Pearl Street in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. Seeking a side permit for dimensional variation to construct an addition that exceeds the height and side yard requirements. An application for the same dated 4/23/2019 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250 7.4A and Section 250 5.3A2. Street address of the property is 32 Pearl Street. Assessor's map, 122 parcel 38. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Scott A. Kerewak and Nicole A. McClellan, 32 Pearl Street. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7986, Page 166, and recorded 8/28/2013. There is a special permit question. Your packets are probably out of order. The applicant shall provide the board with information that shows the proposed use. The current conditions. Currently constructed at 32 Pearl Street is an attached one-car garage with approximate dimensions of 16 by 32. The garage is sitting on a foundation that is settled and is starting to deteriorate. The existing garage has one overhead door, one rear access door, and one door that accesses the basement of the existing home. The existing structure sits within the current 15-foot setback of the side yard. There are no neighbors to the rear as the property slopes to an elevation that sits higher than the tallest point of the existing house. To the front of the house is Pearl Street. Many homes and structures in the neighborhood sit within the current setback minimums. Proposed conditions. The proposed addition replaces the existing garage with a new one-car garage measuring 16 by 24. The new addition will not impede the side yard setback any further than it currently is sitting. The garage will get longer by four feet but will not provide out further than the existing house. Above the garage will be a new family room that will connect inside through the existing living room. To keep the architectural sightlines of the existing structure, the proposed addition will match the existing roof slope of the main structure. This method will keep a uniformed construction method throughout the property. We, the applicant, seek a special permit to construct a proposed addition with a 15-foot side setback, as well as permission to build higher than the allowable 17 feet so that the architectural sightlines are uniform with the existing structures on the property. The special permit questions. Number one, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, the proposed addition at the property at 32 Pearl Street will have the same use, a garage, and will be built in the same location of the existing structure. There will be no adverse effect to the public. Two, will the action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? A, the proposed addition will fit in with the architectural character of the neighborhood. The proposed use will be identical to the surrounding properties. Many other homes in my neighborhood have both attached and detached garage. As mentioned in the existing conditions, the existing structure sits on a plot of land that rises above the ridgeline of the home. No neighbors will have a blocked view. Number three, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? All actions will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines. Number four, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply, the proposed use is the same as the budding properties and will not be detrimental to the neighborhood nor create a nuisance or serious hazardous to vehicles or pedestrians. And that's signed by Nicole and Scott Kerewak of 32 Pearl Street in Lunenburg. I'll read the letter to the, from the building commissioner, to the Board of Appeals. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing garage and construct a new expanded garage. While the access and address is off Pearl Street, they have 157 feet of frontage on Flat Hill Road. The required side yard would be 15 feet where 12 exist. Number one, a special permit under Section 250 7.4A with a finding that the reconstruction/alteration will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. Number two, the proposal will result in additional nonconformity. The height of the structure along the westerly side of the dwelling exceeds the allowable height as set forth in Section 250 5.3A2. The allowable height will be limited to a side yard plus five, plus five feet. In this case, the side yard is eight, plus five provides a maximum height of 17 feet. The proposal, in worst case, would be 25 feet tall. There is a existing site plan of the property, a proposed site plan with a new addition, and there is the assessor's map showing the location of the property, a list of abutters, and a, another map from the assessor's office. I did receive word from the Conservation Commission that this construction is out of the 100-foot buffer zone, so they had no issues. The Board of Health sent a lengthy letter, and Mr. Kerewak spoke to the Board of Health today, and he's aware that he has to comply with all the Title V guidelines and regulations. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant up to the mic, and you can submit any additional or say whatever you would like.
I'm Scott Kerewak, 32 Pearl Street, Lunenburg. I do have some documents, most of them are already in your packet, shows the plot, our plot of land within the neighborhood. Pretty basic, straightforward, we're just replacing, more or less the same footprint, getting a little bit longer towards the road, but not extending out beyond the house. We'll show you the documents and the drawings of the elevations if you guys are interested in seeing them, but pretty straightforward, and if you guys have any questions, we can talk about it from there.
Okay. So right now, what you're really asking for is a three-foot on the side yard and eight feet on the height.
Yeah, currently, the garage is 15 feet, eight inches wide, and I'm proposing to bring it out to 16 feet, so it's about four inches that I'm looking to expand closer to the side yard. And it's 20 feet long, looking to get it 24 feet out to the front, so really, I'm only looking to expand it four inches beyond where it sits currently.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will open it up to the board, if they have any questions, comments, if you want to see any more of the drawings that is brought.
No, I just had the question because in your report and what Lisa read, you said it was 16 by 24 currently, and then you said you were going, a new one of going 16 by 24, it's the same thing, and then you said it will get longer by 20, but you just clarified that answer.
Yeah, I noticed that when she was reading, it might have been a typo on my end. The current structure is 16 by 20, or 15, eight by 20, and then I'm looking to go 16 by 24.
That was my only question, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I do, would like to see some kind of elevations because he's explaining that, I'm assuming this garage is now going to be underneath?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, do you have like a, I mean, do you have a architectural plans or anything that you can put in front of us?
Yes, do you want to see them on this, or do you want me to bring them up to you?
Well, you kind of have to show them that if you're going to show it to the public.
Okay.
There's an easel over here.
Okay.
You can detach the microphone.
Hey, can you go through all your work?
This is the current site plan from the assessor's map, shows where our property line sits, and our house is currently located here, and you can see the garage sticking out to the side over there currently. This is our proposed demolition plan, so this is our existing house that sits here. The garage currently sits out to the side over here, and we're proposing to take out the existing structure.
Excuse me, Scott?
Yep.
They can't see at home.
Okay. Where do I need to bring it?
Turn a little.
Better?
Yeah, you really have to stand off to the side.
I do?
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. So again, existing house in the gray shaded area, and then the existing garage that we are looking to demolish and replace. This is the proposed plan of the garage, so again, existing house, and then the garage showing the new plan, so again, it goes out 16 feet and then 24 feet out closer to the road, so as you see, it doesn't go out beyond the main structure of the house. This is elevation views, so this is looking from the side property, from the side where the setback we're encroaching, so this is where that sightline will sit, and this is the front of the house coming, looking from the street. So you have the garage door and then some windows into the seating area that we're proposing to build. And this is the view from the rear, again, so that's, this is the side of the house that we're encroaching the setback, and view from, from the rear of the house. And I have some existing pictures of the current structure. They're on a smaller, smaller page, but basically, you can see the existing structure where it sits, and we're just looking to take that down as it's a little, it's falling apart, the foundation's cracked, so want to replace that and then bring it back up to the, a little bit better of a garage.
Could you go back to just the front view?
Sure.
That's the one I have a question on.
Yep.
Because there's nothing that's showing me that's what the elevate, and what the elevations are in question here, so.
Sure.
It's the, basically, it's the peak of the roof is, you need, you need the relief for the peak of the roof.
Yeah, I need relief from the, from the height, from the peak of the roof, because I think we're supposed to be within 17 feet, so we're proposing it's 25 feet, and, and then this side of the house as well, which encroaches the, the side setback.
Okay, and you mentioned that the, there would be an entrance through the living room, so that is the, is the elevation of the lip, this the same as the living room?
No, it's, it steps up, there is a, going to be a two-step step up into that.
Okay, so it's basically about a foot, a foot, about two feet?
Correct.
If you just leave, if you can leave me on the last one, that's.
Yep, I just wanted to show you where the stair was.
And, and have you looked to make sure that there's no water tables or anything like that that's going to infringe on this, on the digging of, on the digging out of this garage?
We haven't experienced any water issues on site, we've been on the property for about five and a half years. I haven't done any digging exploration myself yet, but we haven't experienced any issues. And we're pretty high up from where Lake Shirley sits, so, you know, I haven't known of any water issues in the neighborhood.
And is there any thought of eliminating those two steps?
We could, however, the way that our current basement sits, it would create, the garage would only, would be less than eight feet tall. It would be about 7'6" because of how, how low our basement structure is, so for us to meet the first floor, we would have to lower the garage height by a significant amount, and we would be afraid that we wouldn't be able to fit a, you know, normal car in with equipment and whatnot.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Patrick, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. There are no more questions, I'll ask for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, public discussion. If anybody from the public would like to speak, please come up to the mic, give your name and address, and say what you would like. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we approve the, the relief, both the side relief and the height relief.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. It is granted. I do have some little bit of post-reading that it is granted. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petition apply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinance, and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. Copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days, and any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed, since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And good luck with your new garage.
Good luck.
Those were my questions, I was picturing it going all the way up to the second floor.
Yeah.
Twenty-five feet, those floors would be tiny.
He wasn't explaining that to the garage.
It's almost like a drive under.
Yeah. I don't know why you can't drop him another two feet, I understand that the, you know, he's going to have a footing, and he might have to pour, a double pour.
Yeah.
Or something like that, but still. But, that was important, I was saying. It would look like a lawsuit, anybody, let's go over it, let's talk to them.
Yeah.
Get rid of the lie.
Yeah.[1063.58]
Yes, I will be on.
Yeah, she should be on in a minute, so in a minute.
Okay. You'll see the flag go up. Okay, it's 7:30. This is actually a continuation, but I'm still going to give you some notifications. The hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg public access. I will reintroduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Grival. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, and Patrick Callahan. We, this, as I say, is a continuance of a hearing regarding the petition of Darren Massey, 300 Holman Street, as a person agreed by the building commissioner, a cease and desist order dated March 18th, 2019. We continued the hearing using the Mullen Rule to allow the fifth member to review the material in the video, and for the hearing that was missed. David Blatt has given me the certificate that he has reviewed, and I will ask him, you watched all of the videos, tapes, and received all the material and reviewed it all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I do have a signed certificate. Okay. I know that we received some additional materials. We have read them all. But what I would like to say tonight, we will have a public comment at the period. The applicant again will have time to come up for more comments on the application or his attorney. Again, if anyone comes up, give your name and address, and all questions, everything goes to the board, and the board will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or his representative while he's there at the mic. There will be a public comment period, but I want to caution you. We had a public comment period. It was long and lengthy. We let everybody speak. So I would like you, if you would like to speak, please focus on what? The new things that are coming here tonight, not on what you heard last time. So if you could please just do that, so if it's new, please, you know, you're more than welcome, come to the mic, say what you would like. Okay. And with that, I will invite the applicant back up to the mic, who's Attorney Bowen. I know that you submitted a new document today. If you would like it read into the record, or you would like to address it yourself.
Thank you. Attorney Robert Bowen, I happen to reside at 1686 Massachusetts Avenue here in Lunenburg, but I am here tonight representing the applicant Darren Massey. I did submit a summary of my remarks to the board previously. I'm not going to read it all into the record. I'm just going to comment generally on it. I assume that it is part of the record.
Correct.
And so I don't feel the need to repeat everything that's in there. I do just want to make sure at the outset that I do have everything, because I had some confusion last week with our conversation. I thought I understood you to have referred to more than one letter that was not read into the record last week. This morning I was provided with a single letter, and if that's all there is, that's fine. I just want to make sure I have everything. But you read several department head letters into the record last time, and then made a comment that there were others that were not read into the record.
There was actually a number of residents who have sent in letters to this board, all of which we read. We did not read them into the record last week. There were too many, and I actually commented on that at that meeting, that that's... And you are more than welcome to have all those letters. I think Lisa can provide.
All right.
The entire file to you.
I will, I will follow up, but I followed up with the office this morning again, and I was given one letter, and that's what I led to believe, was led to believe, was the universe of documents. But let's see how tonight unfolds.
We will make sure that, Lisa will make sure that you get every, everything that we have.
Thank you. And, and that letter did remind me that we still have concerns about some, what I guess I will describe as external issues that are motivating some, but not all of the remarks. And we remain concerned about that. There have been remarks about the national origin of the applicant. There have been some remarks, maybe not here at this board, but at other boards and in social media, critical of the substance of some of the events because of their LGBT component. And even the letter that I was referencing that I was provided with this morning appeared to be substantively critical of some of the events, like the intimacy activities and the naked yoga. I don't think I need to remind this board that the substance isn't what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about the zoning issues, and that's what I want to focus us on. I also spent a great deal, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, I would just, just comment on that. I can tell you right now, this board is focused only on zoning issues.
Great.
That is all, you know, it's strictly zoning, resident, what it is, what affects zoning, that's it. The events, we're not concerned with.
I, and I appreciate that. And last time, I spent some, some amount of time detailing legally what I thought was wrong with the underlying decision. I don't feel the need to go back and review all of the legal arguments that I made last time. I'm here really tonight to appeal, in the words of my brother John Dombrowski, to everybody's common sense. People have a right to use their property. And I understand the issue that we're all grappling with, which is, at what point does the use of a residential property somehow morph that property from a residential use to some other non-conforming, non-allowable use? And our position is, this property and even the 29 events is, over a four-year period, seven events a year out of 365 days, is just nowhere close to that. But leaving aside our argument for the minute, the building commissioner has set the number at zero. That, that can't be the number. This applicant needs to be able to do something on his property. There are lots of customary accessory incidental uses to residential properties all over town. Yard sales, parties, weddings. I mean, we talked about them the last time. I don't have to go through the whole list. But the, the number can't be zero. And that's what the cease and desist order does. It sets the number at zero. If this board upholds that, it leaves the applicant with no choice but to go to court to challenge that, to be able to use his private property. If instead, the board reverses the determination and effectively sends this back, then we all sit down in a very common sense approach with the building commissioner, and once and for all, figure this out. Because the, it just, the number just can't be zero. So we are, we are appealing to the board's common sense to help us get to a resolution. And, and it's really, it's really that simple in the end. That being said, we're here to answer any questions that the board has, particularly, I know Mr. Blatt was not here for the last meeting.
Right.
But if he or anybody else has any questions, we're happy to address them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're at the mic, why don't we see if David does have any questions for you?
Actually, can I reserve for asking questions later?
What's that?
I have no questions at this moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, since you mentioned Mr. Dombrowski, I see he's still here. If you would like to speak, you may. If not, that's fine.
Usually I have that when I'm silent. But I agree that common sense controls. If you uphold the building commissioner's decision, which I'd suggest to the board, he didn't arrive at lightly. He spent a good deal of time on it. It's a well-reasoned decision, and I think it comports with the law. If you uphold his decision, it's real, this isn't complicated. That property, which is in a residential zone, is then treated like every other property in a residential zone. That's the reason you have these protective bylaws. The added element is, you know, what is somebody's expectation of, you know, living in a property that's owned residential? And you have an expectation, you know, and I said this, I believe, at the last meeting, but you have an expectation that your neighbor might have a loud party. He might have a bunch of loud parties, and you've got to call the police if the noise gets out of hand. His daughter might get married, and they might have the wedding in the backyard. There might be a Christmas party. There might be a big Thanksgiving Day celebration. These are reasonable expectations. But what's occurring at this property is, is not something that someone who buys a home, who invests, maybe their largest investment that they have, reasonably expects to occur. It's really, it's, it's not a complicated issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No question?
Not at this moment.
At this time. Okay. With that, again, I'll open it up to the public, since we don't have any questions at that this time. Again, please keep it to new issues, not repeat of last meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name's Elizabeth McAlune, and I recently moved to Lunenburg about a year ago from New York City. And I've really been enjoying the beauty of the country, especially where I live at 300 Holman Street. Just wanted to say hi to everybody, and thank you for coming.
You, you have to talk to the board, please.
I know. I was just saying hi to them.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. I have been very active in New York City civics groups for 37 years. So I know how much work you guys do that nobody sees at night with emails and phone calls and research and reading. So thank you for that. My friend Darren owns the property. I've known Darren for about five years. Darren, I consider to be family. It's been tricky living there. I've had people come into our mailbox and pull out mail to find out my name, and then send a letter to the city. I've had people drive down the street in front of the driveway to count the cars that are there, so that they could report that to the city. I've been attacked on Facebook, saying that I was a cult member. Cult members don't have expensive highlights like this. And they don't wear, and they don't wear kind of cool clothes. They, it's not, I'm clearly not a cult member. There's been a lot of personal attack against my friend, and subsequently against myself, who just happens to be living there because I had some difficult situations happen in my life. And there are other people that live there, that Darren has taken in because of specific difficult circumstances in their life, because he's kind. And it's really hard to imagine right now in this world that people do things just out of kindness. There's always like, people always think there's some kind of motivation. Sometimes people just do things to be a good person. It's hard to believe, but it's true. Sorry, I won't go on too long. Darren seems like a different guy. I mean, he's wearing a purple shirt. I mean, he doesn't seem like the average guy. He's got an accent. He comes from another country. He grew up in a Jewish family. He believes in peace, love, and all that kind of stuff. I hate naked yoga. I would never do naked yoga. I hate all that stuff. And yet, I think it's every person's right to do it in their backyard if they want to, or have friends over and do it. To me, it's something out of my comfort zone. I would just never do that. But the guy bought 140 acres of property, pays a lot of taxes to own that property. He doesn't bother anybody. He made a rookie mistake three years ago, or four years ago, whatever it is. He made a rookie mistake by having an event that was probably too large for his first event in the community, and it freaked everyone out. It's kind of a really harsh discipline to say, therefore, you can't have anything. Maybe put some guidelines on it. Maybe say, only this many events or this kind of events. But you can't say, stop everything. That's just not American. It's not what we do in this country. You know? That's just not who we are. I don't own any tie-dye clothes either. There needs to be a reasonable approach. A reasonable approach, when you buy a property with an acre or two around it, and you're in a residential area, is, you might have a Christmas party, or Thanksgiving party, or whatever, like this gentleman said. Darren bought 140 acres, and he pays the taxes to this town. Okay? Most of the acres are not in a residential area, they're in an outlying area, and you know that when you look at your records. It's not marked purely residential. It's residential and outlying. And you know that. So what I would say with great respect is, you need to apply a standard of reasonableness that reflects the quality of the people in this town, not a few vocal people that are attacking me, getting me very emotional and upset, making comments to me, threatening me, and threatening my friend, because I live in a house where there might be naked yoga once in a while. Really, people? That's not, that's not who we're about. And I invite any of you to come anytime. And I was also accused, if I wanted to meet somebody in a coffee shop, that I was trying to groom them to come into a cult. I just want to sit and have a conversation with people, just a normal person, living in a house, that has a friend that likes to do stuff that I'm not really that into. So I ask you guys to be reasonable. Obviously, I'm upset and emotional because I care deeply about my friend, and I'm shocked to come to a really stunning town like Lunenburg, and experience the kind of attack and bias and prejudice that I've experienced here. I did not expect it. And actually, I choose to believe, which I think is true, that that does not represent the quality and the caliber of the people at large in this town. And I hope that you will reflect that and show that you will not be bullied by a few loud mouths who need to collect stamps or get cable TV or something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Hatch, and I live at 41 Hilltop Lane. And people think I'm totally fine about getting up and speaking, but this is not necessarily a comfortable thing for me to do. But I'm here because it's important. I met Mr. Massey a few years ago. As a longtime resident of Lunenburg, I was thrilled to learn about the Lanes. I can't believe I grew, you know, grew up in this town and didn't even know they existed. And it was great to hear about their endeavors in sport of the, in support of the arts. Tenderness places mission to promote community, kindness, diversity, education, and connection to nature are important to me as an individual, a longtime resident, and a parent. I live on Hickory Hills Lake, and witness gatherings that are not only loud, but last late into the night, almost every weekend, in the summer. When my parents bought the property in 1972, there were no party boats. There were no snowmobiles. People didn't have big sound systems. But we've learned to adjust. It's private property, but I still need to learn to adjust. And a previous speaker talked about the types of events that are acceptable, celebrating Thanksgiving, or Christmas, or weddings. My family and I have been celebrating a Jewish holiday called Yom Kippur for the last 45 years on the deck of our property. I think that's acceptable. I don't understand why other events aren't acceptable. I attended the Unifier event and found it to be a peaceful event. Yes, there was music, and as the previous speaker said, maybe it wasn't the best first event because people got upset about it. But there has not been an event to that extent since then. I actually drove Holman Street, and Mr. Massey's property is buffered by a mile on each side to the nearest house on Holman Street, and it's very heavily wooded. And when I was at Unifier, I was only there And when I was at Unifier, I was only there for one day, but honestly, I heard more music down at Hickory Hills Lake than I heard on Holman Street. I got to tell you that. Let's see. The main reason I'm here is I hope that the residents of Holman Street will be willing to sit down with Mr. Massey. You'll find him to be a reasonable man and he should be allowed to A, do what he wants to do in his own property, and B, he's really a gift of light to our community, in my opinion. He has been involved in so many activities. He promotes diversity, which is very much needed. And just on a personal note, last year, I was the healthcare proxy of somebody that was, that eventually died of brain cancer. And he offered his services. And we weren't good friends, nor was he really good friends with her. But he offered his services to us because we were struggling. Finally, I would really like to see the Pride event go forward as planned because it's important to me for all LGBTQ people, but especially for youth. As the mother of a transgender child, I witnessed firsthand the consequences of my son staying in the closet. He identified as a male at age four, but didn't share that with anyone until he was 16. And then, only because he felt he had to choose between transitioning or ending his life. It was a balancing act for him. And he didn't know when that balance was going to switch. So he finally came to me. And I transferred him to another school. And this is not a criticism of Lunenburg, but he needed to go to a place that actively promoted diversity so that he would feel safe. And by the way, he's happily married now. So, an event like this might have helped him to feel safe. It might have helped him to feel that he could stay in his own community. But like other speakers have said, I think we need to look at the common sense of the issues. And certainly, to deny Mr. Massey to have events on his property does not make sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The lady in the back.
Hi, thanks. My name's Christine Germanata. I live on Wester Lane in Waltham, Massachusetts. I have known Dr. Massey for about five years now. And I've worked with him, actually, I met him first in a professional environment. I am clinical social worker, so we happen to be working together. It wasn't until later I met him through a whole different process. And he's become one of the best friends I have. I can tell you that anybody sitting on this kind of board, I'm gonna, I trust that you know the difference between character assassination and gossip and just common sense. And I really don't, besides, you know, asking you to take my word for it, that everything about the folks that hang out with Darren and live with Darren, me included, I'm back and forth all the time with my grandson, but I think questions are good. And as, as you consider what's going on with all the dynamics, why would one citizen have restrictions that nobody else in the town really has? Because well, if somebody's having a wedding and that means it's 150 people in the backyard, but the, there's a gay pride event with 50, why would the, that be okay and that not be okay? Why would the nature of an event, so long as it falls within the parameters of the law, and nobody's breaking the law, they're playing music or they're having a religious observation like our last speaker talked about, whatever they're doing, it, it's really not our business. The question is, if anything happens that oversteps the law? Because one person can't be singled out to say you can't, you can't have people at your house. It, it doesn't make sense to me. If, if that's going to be the case, nobody over 50 people, nobody over 100 people, nobody over 150 people, that needs to apply to everybody in town, not just one person. That, you know, that's the social worker in me. Like I said, I've known Darren professionally and as a friend. And I don't, by law, by ethics, by my profession, I am bound by ethics. And I've never met anybody more ethical. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Tom Alonso?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue. With your permission, I, I spoke extemporaneously at the last meeting and I wanted something prepared. If you would allow me to read this short letter that I have sent. So, Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, I submit this letter in opposition to the determination written by the Lunenburg Building Commissioner Gary Rhodes dated March 18th, 2019 regarding the property at 300 Holman Street, Lunenburg, Mass. I believe this determination to be deeply flawed in much of its underlying logical foundation and has as its most serious flaw that of self-contradiction, making it unable to be applied and/or enforced with any predictability. First, it must be emphasized that the zoning rulings of the building commissioner apply equally to all properties within an entire zoning district or the same use within other zoning districts to which the determination applies. So this particular decision is applicable to all properties in the outlying district as well as all residential properties in the entire town, from my understanding. This being the case, I want to be clear that I do not come before this board to speak on behalf or against the specific happenings at 300 Holman Street that brought this case to you. Rather, I come to speak on behalf of the principles of the ruling itself, the deficiencies I see in it, and to speak in favor of the rules of good governance. With that backdrop, I believe it is of the utmost importance that rulings by the building commissioner regarding zoning should be ones that provide guidance and clarification to existing zoning bylaws and regulations. It is clearly recognized that zoning, like other parts of the law, are often open to interpretation and that not every possible parameter or circumstance can be contemplated at the time when the laws are written. When such occasions arise, the resulting decisions should be such that make more clear what was or wasn't the intent of the law, and the ruling should not offer the same level of ambiguity, or worse still, further the confusion or vagueness on the subject. Yet that is exactly what the decision before you has done. In his decision, the building commissioner declares that the property owner, quote, "cease and desist use of the 300 Holman Street property for events that are prohibited under zoning law," unquote. However, no such list and/or type of events are enumerated to describe what events fit that list and therefore what events the property owner needs to avoid to be in compliance with his order. Similarly, the frequency of events are referenced in several places in the March 18th document, leading one to believe that a specific determination will be made as to how many events cross the invisible line the building commissioner is drawing between residential use and non-residential use, but no such calculation is made nor shared. In both of these examples from his order, the determination lends no more clarity or specificity than the existing zoning bylaw itself and is left apparently to the whim of the building commissioner, whoever that may be at the time. That is not good adjudication as neither of these findings are instructive nor sufficiently explanatory, not only to the 300 Holman Property Owner Board, anybody. Next, the order implies without directly stating that the property owner is running a commercial venture and thereby not allowed in the outlying district where, quote, "generally only residential uses are allowed," unquote. However, it provides no framework of how that conclusion was reached and makes no attempt to define what constitutes a business or other commercial endeavor. In fact, at your last meeting, he said directly to this board that the property owner was, quote, "running what I considered a business." He went no further to explain how he came to that conclusion or what evidence he used to arrive at it. There were hints of event frequency, of social media posts and other tangential information, but absolutely no logical or evidentiary case was made to get to that conclusion. And as such, the order once again offered no clarity or guidance to any other property in town as to what is and isn't acceptable and what does or doesn't constitute a business. Surely, we can do better than, I know it when I see it. And lastly, I believe, most importantly, is that I believe the order is self-contradictory. In it, the building commissioner provides some detail about a March 2017 meeting with the property owner regarding the so-called Unifier event. He writes that, quote, "I opine that because the proposed event was limited in scope and duration, it would be allowed if the Board of Selectmen issued an entertainment license," unquote. So he clearly acknowledges that events of a certain type, such as that one, are compliant with the existing zoning. Yet, at the end of the decision, he orders the property owner to, quote, "cease and desist use of 30, 300 Holman Street property for events that are prohibited under the zoning bylaw." That is contradictory to the early statement. You can't have it both ways. Either the use is compliant with zoning or it is not. If it is reliant on the frequency of the events, then it is imperative that a threshold be defined and declared. Currently, the way his order is written, this property owner is now prohibited from hosting events that other residential property owners have a right to hold. The position is untenable. The building commissioner's role is to enforce zoning and establish concise guidelines that instruct everyone not to punish property owners. In this case, he has stripped the property owner of a right that he had already established was available and that they already had and that others are still allowed. For these reasons, as well as other deficiencies not noted in this letter but that I did speak to at your last meeting, I urge you to either overturn the, overturn the determination of the building commissioner dated March 18th, 2019, or at least remand the issue back to him so that he may remedy these obvious defects and may provide much clearer guidance to those who this ruling will affect, either directly or indirectly. Thank you.
Lady over here.
Hello, my name is Virginia Burke and I live in Fitchburg. I'm bringing this statement from a perspective as an artist. And so here, I wrote all the notes down, so it'll be short and sweet. My name is Virginia Burke. I'm an artist and art curator in support of the arts in our community. I live in Fitchburg and I have been active encouraging local artists in Lemonster, Fitchburg, and Lunenburg and Worcester area. 2011 till 2015, I was in the Board of Directors in Lemonster Art Center and Gallery. From spring 2016 until December 18, I developed a village art show that started in Lunenburg. This was a monthly show of local artists. I had searched out to encourage and promote in their gifting. With our show openings, local musician artists had also the opportunity to share their gifts and music and artists to show and sell their work. I know Darren Massey, Mr. Darren Massey now, about three years, and I'm very encouraged to know that there is a humble individual that has a beautiful property and wants to share it in promoting the arts and connect the community together. This is a self-explanatory, something very positive and a plus for our community. We know that arts bring people together. Art is an expression of our humanity. It is showing life in itself. It brings us together because we can relate to what we see and hear. And it brings beauty in our surroundings in visual and audible ways. This is what Mr. Massey has encouraged, to bring the arts together, to bring the community together. This is what I have seen, but I also see a lot of hatred. And I don't know where that hatred comes from and why this division that we have. We're one community. We should all get together and work this out in love and bring our families together and take care of this issue in a proper manner and not fight against each other like that. And art brings people together. Music brings people together. We need that. We need this here in Lunenburg very, very much. That's how families can learn from each other and encourage one another. So this is something to think about very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica Frank, 278 Holman Street. I want to say that arts keep being brought up. We had a wonderful art festival in our town just this past weekend. I wasn't able to attend, but I saw it. While, while my child is playing soccer, it was great. There was music, there was art. I have no issues with anything, any of the events. It's not about what's happening. First of all, I don't have to like it. It doesn't matter if I do like it. I personally have no, nothing against any event. However, it's a residential area. It's an event. There's a difference between a house party and an event. I don't ever have tickets to anything that I have in my house. So there is a difference between an event and a party. Regardless of what the number is, it's different. There's no tickets to a house party. To me, everything stemmed back to, his 140 acres is zoned residential, which I think when you buy a house, it says that. I'm pretty sure that, that's, that's part of it. Zoning laws exist for a reason, is to protect the homeowners. And there are plenty of other areas in Lunenburg to host these events. As I said, we just had an art festival, there's Stillman's Festi, there's Stillman's Land that could pass, there's plenty of other places. If, if having these events are so important, then there's other places to purchase or rent or lease to have them. If it's all about the events, which keeps, everything keeps coming back to the fact that no one wants these events. I think no one wants this in a residential area. Not nobody wants these events. And I think that's getting muddled and I think that's, I feel the neighborhood is getting dragged through the mud because it's saying that we don't want arts and pride and all of that. And we do, that's not the issue. It's, it's the word "event." There are places to have events and it's not at a house, regardless of how many acres you have. I keep, I'm just, you know, like I said, I feel like we're getting raked in the mud. Residential neighborhoods do not need changes in zoning to port, to support the desires of one resident. Not only in my neighborhood, but in any other neighborhood in Lunenburg. This is a huge decision that could open the doors for anybody in any street in this whole town to decide, I want to make my house commercial. That's, that seems, that seems like a really big decision that this, this proceeding is really opening up. So if this goes through, what's going to happen next is every neighborhood going to become, have one random house with commercial zoning? And that's all I have to say. And I hope we keep our residential areas residential and we find, I hope Dr. Massey can find other spots in Lunenburg to host these because they are wonderful events and I think our town could really benefit from more of anything that anybody wants to bring to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind using my phone for notes tonight, this is...
Go right ahead.
My name is David Melvin. I live at 655 Page Street. And my experience with Dr. Massey has been recent, within the last two months. We've lived here in Lunenburg for about two years and my appearance here is mostly selfish in that I always want to know what's going on in town. I get involved in my community and I want to know... I get involved in my community, and I want to know what's happening. And I happened to fall on this discussing Lunenburg website, which discusses happenings in Lunenburg. And 300 Holman Street is a great way to get banned from that site, by the way. It's a conversation that not many people want to have. And from my understanding of it, it seems that the pushback on it has nothing to do with the residential zone. If any of you have taken a ride by that property, and again, my first interaction with this conversation was to meet Darren online, and both sides were arguing back and forth over whether or not they should have these events happen in this neighborhood. And the only person who reached out was Darren and said, "Why don't you come and take a look at the property and see what it is that people are complaining about?" For a residential area, when you think of residential, not residential outlier, we think of residential, and I live on Page Street. We're fairly sparse, but everybody owns a couple of acres. Mr. Massey has got 150 acres at his disposal. Everything seems to work its way into a bowl. There's a ton of force around them, and the residential area that he's discussing is eight houses, two of which are for sale currently. Eight houses next to this industrial park behind them, car dealerships, which can't be all that quiet, major equipment repair places. So it seems that the discussion is really about the content of the events, because like many have noticed tonight or have mentioned, really what we're talking about is what's the number? Can you have a wedding hosted at your house? And with the construction that's going on in the area, we've seen a lot of development of places. These conversations are going to come up more often. People are going to want to host events, weddings, receptions, because this land is becoming more and more scarce. It's a beautiful property. I don't know Mr. Massey outside of the one introduction that I've had. He gave me a tour of the property, talked about the history, the lanes who were here in town, millions of dollars' worth of art, and that couldn't have been for nothing. They developed this property to be something to share with the general public, and they brought a lot of people to these, to this house to see the property and enjoy it. It's a fantastic piece of land. So he seems to be one of the few parties that's willing to compromise. Every time there's an obstacle put in place, Mr. Massey has said, "Okay, well, what is the obstacle, and how can we overcome it?" And the other side has said, "Absolutely not. No is the only answer that we have." When they've said, "The noise levels are too loud." Looking through the zoning bylaws, I can only find one zoning bylaw that says, "Cut the music down to less than 100 decibels at the property line," which is extensive in his case, "and no music after, let's say, 10:00 p.m." Well, if that were the regulation, then that could be strictly adhered to. So then they say, "Well, there's a problem with traffic. Why can't you shuttle people into these events? If traffic is truly the issue, there's a great parking lot that the city built on the other side of the bridge. There's main ways of egress. If security is an issue, it can be an issue that's handled with the local police department, with officers." But like they said, you want to treat every residence the same way. And I would have a hard time with a zoning board that comes in and says, "You can no longer operate your tractor between the hours of 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock." Well, why is that? Because one neighbor has been upset? We're our right to farm community. We allow all kinds of nuisances to intrude our lives, whether that be traffic, farmers, when they spread manure in the springtime. Everything's a nuisance, but we get used to it because we live out here, and that's what we do as neighbors. Mr. Massey, to me, has shown himself to be a neighbor who at least reached out and said, "I want to know what I can do to appease the masses, what I can do to make it friendlier." And outside of the content of his entertainment, I have no idea what they do there. I simply know that he has a beautiful piece of property. It can certainly accommodate thousands of people if that was what was requested, but any of the other obstacles that are out there, we should be able to find a way to come to some kind of a resolution. So there's a, there's a lot of gray area in this conversation, and I hope that you have a lot to consider, but I would have no objection to bringing more art or festivities into Lunenburg. As a community, we should probably gather more often, whether it's for these festivals, chicken barbecues, whatever it may be. But you can't make better neighbors by never meeting them. So hopefully, we get a chance to meet some new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Borelli, 484 Holman.
I can't hear him.
Just speak up, please.
Chris Borelli, 484 Holman Street. I'd like to clarify a few things. One of the previous speakers said that she drove down the street, and there was a mile between the nearest house in either direction. That's actually incorrect. It's 800 feet on the north side and probably about 1,000 feet on the southern side. And a mile is 5,280 feet. So that's incorrect. There's been a lot of arguments about what types of events, et cetera, and I point you back to the zoning laws, which are, you can't have external or, external or internal exhibits. And if someone holds a Christmas party, that's not an exhibit. Or, you know, Thanksgiving dinner's not an exhibit. But when you open it up to ticket sales, in some cases grossing $100,000, that's an exhibit, and that violates our zoning laws. So we're not trying to stop every single event that, you know, somebody wants to have at their house. I mean, everyone should have a right to have a graduation party or whatever, but when you open it up to the public and put it on Facebook and invite the entire community, that to me is an exhibit, and our bylaws clearly state that you can't host those at your residential property. So it doesn't matter what type of events. I just, I want to bring it back to the facts that you can't hold external or internal exhibits on a residential property. And the last thing is, a lot of arguments are that, you know, Dr. Massey has 140 acres. He does. There's no argument. But they're not hosting events on 140 acres. They're hosting events on about five acres or less than five acres. Okay? They're not using all 140 acres. And we already talked about the buffers. It's 800 feet one way or 1,000 feet the other way. So these arguments really don't hold any water. So I'd ask you to just focus on the facts here. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one other gentleman. Did you have your hand up? Then I'll come back.
Good evening. Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. You heard in all, all kinds of stories tonight. They're all sad stories. They're all probably true. You know, the, but it all goes back to the zoning. Back in 2017, Mr. Massey came before you people and withdrew because it was going to be denied. So, and it's been going on ever since. The building inspector and the land use director spoke to Mr. Massey several times about going to the planning board, going to you people to try to set up a plan to take care of the zoning issues. That's been over two years. He hasn't done that. He's held these events by sidestepping everything. He, you know, I think what the fire chief, Patrick Sullivan, said, you know, is important, that, you know, it could be a public safety issue. I've been at some of the selectmen's meetings, and some of the people that come in from the pride organization have said that they've felt threatened and that, you know, their public safety is in jeopardy if they go to this event. Well, that's a, that's a problem with public safety. So I think that, you know, these events could be public safety issues. Last, last meeting, Mr. Massey got up and said that all of the, all of the things that were said about Unifier were unfounded. That was his words. I contacted the chief of police, and I asked him to write you a letter of all of the, all of the calls and everything that were done. There was a tremendous amount of calls. There was a tremendous amount of issues. And I just think it's going to keep escalating into more public safety issues as we keep going and these events keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You know, all of that aside, it just comes down to common sense. Zoning. Zoning was the problem in 2017. Zoning is the problem still today. It hasn't changed. It goes on, you know? Us neighbors, you know, a lot of us are very professional. You know, we can disagree with, with people in town, but we can shake their hand, too. But we've been, we've been labeled loudmouths, complainers, you know? Should I take offense to that? Should I be sensitive and say, "Oh, my God, you know, these people are attacking us?" So it just goes on and on. And Mr. Massey has, you know, you know, one of the things that he did illegally was build a stage on top of Muffus Brook years ago without any permit or anything. I mean, what are we going to wait for? Him to dump oil into Muffus Brook? Color it red like the, like the Nashua River used to be years ago? You know, it's got to stop somewhere. But I think that, you know, what Patrick Sullivan said, you know, to deny this and because it could be a public safety, and there are other venues that, that hold events in town, three of them, he named, and I think that, you know, that should be it because those are looked at, you know, by all of the agencies in town. Thank you so much for all you guys do, and women. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello. I'm Helen Obermeyer Simmons, and I have just a short statement, and then I'd like to read a letter into the record that was sent, I believe, to you this afternoon by Will Darkangelo.
You may.
Okay. So, again, Helen Obermeyer Simmons, 323 North Field Road. I've lived in Lunenburg for 20 years, and I'm an artist and a professor of communications media. I was lucky enough to be asked to present on the Lane Collection at the Lunenburg Library a month ago or so, and so I did a lot of research about the lanes, which I didn't know, and about the photography. I brought a little, a little piece of show and tell for you all. This is a book that was produced by the MFA, and it has all of the photographs in it that are in the Lane Collection. And I'm just going to read a little, you know, the fly of this so that you know what the book contains. It says, "Among private collections of fine photography, the Lane Collection stands out as one of the most remarkable. Begun in the 1960s and still ongoing, it shines not only for its wealth of top-quality prints by the greatest modern triumvirate of Edward Weston, Charles Sheeler, and Ansel Adams, including the most important single collection of Ansel Adams' work, but also for its breadth and from the historically significant to the cutting edge. This book presents 115 photographic masterpieces from the Lane Collection, ranging from William Henry Fox, Talbot, to the Star Twins, including works by Adams, Arbus, Brancusi, Bravo, Cunningham, yada, 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 lots of names here that a photographer would know." And they have, and Karen Haas was the woman who compiled this together. I was lucky enough to go into the Museum of Fine Arts last Thursday. There are three galleries named for William and Sandra Lane, which are exhibiting the work. And I think, again, one of my, I'm an educator, right? So one of my thoughts is, I see my role in town as being an educator about this wonderful art collection that was begun here in town. Now, I would like to read this letter into the record. I think you all got it, from a Mr. Will Darkangelo. Did you get that letter? Okay. So it's dated June 11, and it says, "My name is Will Darkangelo, and I am the minister at First Parish Unitarian Universalist Church of Fitchburg. I am moved to write you on this occasion to express my support for the work of Darren Massey and Tenderness." Did you get it?
It was an email that was received very, very late.
Okay.
I did receive it, but--
Okay.
It was sent after we started meeting.
Oh, all right. So--
It was never sent to us.
Okay. Well, then I'm glad I'm reading it into the record. All right. So, back to this. "I am moved to write you on this occasion to express my support for the work of Darren Massey and the Tenderness Gathering Place. The mission of this group is to kindle love, art, beauty, nature, community, connection to spirit, and words that heal. I am sure that none of us are in disagreement about the necessity of these objectives. In my experience with Mr. Massey and his property, he has shown himself to be an excellent addition to any small but thoughtful community. The events he holds and wishes to continue to produce at his 300 Holman Street location are worthy of inclusion. I warmly recommend making the effort to collaborate with Mr. Massey and his goals for creating and fostering a unique and important gathering place for people of all creeds and colors. It has come to my attention that there is a zoning concern regarding the hosting of events on Mr. Massey's property. In particular, it appears there is concern regarding an upcoming LGBT-themed event. In this day and age, I certainly hope that the nature of this event in particular is not what is underpinning the debate, especially at the 50th anniversary of the riots which began the modern LGBT movement in America. In a state like Massachusetts, local civil rights groups and legal advocates would take a dim view of the optics here. The LGBT community is certainly capable of holding a respectful and decent gathering. I would not advocate on its behalf otherwise. Please consider the implications of your decision." And then Will speaks. "My family spent many years on Pearl Street on the shore of Lake Shirley. Lunenburg holds a very special place in my heart. I would be very disappointed to see its reputation tarnished by the appearance of an unloving decision made by the community or by its leadership. I have a fair amount of experience in event planning and community organization. I would be happy to offer any assistance necessary upon your request. With respectful regards, Will Darkangelo, Minister and Community Advocate of the First Parish Unitarian Universalist Church of Fitchburg." And the final thing that I'd like to make is, previous speakers mentioned ticket sales. As far as I know, there were ticket sales for the Unifer Festival, but that was a number of years ago. The events that we were proposing for this summer, including the photography event, was free, open to the public. Only an educational mission was involved, to bring the community together. And someone else mentioned the fact that, you know, some of them had spent their lifetime savings on their property. And yes, I think that's probably maybe very true. They invested in Lunenburg, which is a wonderful town. Dr. Massey has also invested in Lunenburg. And so I wish you would just consider all of this. I think you probably have seen very emotive responses from a number of different people. My concern is about the arts and the ability of the arts to heal.
Thank you. I think there was one gentleman back there.
The events that we were proposing for this summer, including the photography event, was free, open to the public. Only an educational mission was involved, to bring the community together. And someone else mentioned the fact that, you know, some of them had spent their lifetime savings on their property. And yes, I think that's probably maybe very true. They invested in Lunenburg, which is a wonderful town. Dr. Massey has also invested in Lunenburg. And so I wish you would just consider all of this. I think you probably have seen very emotive responses from a number of different people. My concern is about the arts and the ability of the arts to heal.
I think there was one gentleman back there. No? Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Eric Vickery. I live at 169 Peninsula Drive in Lunenburg. My family and I have been residents in Lunenburg for over 30 years, and this town has proven to be the kind of community that we had hoped for when we moved here in terms of great schools, churches, scouting organization, and a fine place to live and raise a family. We'd like to see it stay that way. Nature, photography, and the stewardship for our planet are sources of joy and motivation for me, and they're elements that bring people together to do good things and to add value to the community and therefore for the world, as we're all connected and it certainly matters at the local level. As a photographer and a concerned participant in the evolution of our species, climate change is a topic that is really close to my heart. It cannot be more important, and it is as much so in our neighborhoods and locality as it is for the globe. It's only recently that I've become aware and involved with the Tenderness Gathering Place and its community. I'd like to demonstrate my support for the vision and the efforts that Darren is nurturing in the mission of this unique and beautiful space, as well as the legacy of the Lane Collection. The talents and spirit and the sharing opportunities of so many artists are something to treasure and promote in our town. Most of all, respect for each other in the neighborhoods, in the community, is certainly expected, and good stewardship of this property and our relationships as community members is what I believe everybody should be working toward. Let's find a way to collaborate, put some goalposts around what's being asked for here. We don't want to see this escalate and have further division between the people of the city. Let's stick to the facts. Let's find some common ground. Let's be reasonable and appeal to people's common sense. And because of the gravity of things that have happened in the past, and I don't know all the facts of that, I'd be willing to bet a month's pay that Darren and the people are not going to let something get out of hand again like it happened before. Some of the greatest lessons I ever had in my life were made from making mistakes. We learn from them, we come out better on the other side, and we're better people for it. That's the way I think Lunenburg ought to treat this. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman back there, then I'll come back.
My name is Nate Wallach. I work, I live at 6 Windmere Drive. I'm in a butter. So, Dr. Massey's representation tonight said, "How many events should be allowed? How many should we allow? You can't allow none." Well, yes. The number of events can be zero. It can be zero in a household. It can be zero. That's what cease and desist means. It means no. Okay? This guy's been told no time and time again. And you can't run commercial events on your property. That's -- I don't understand why everyone can't understand. Why can't it be three? Why can't it be seven? Okay? Because they're rules, and you can't run a business in someone else's backyard. All right? You can't do that to your neighbors. Okay? We'll defend our homestead, and we have that right. I mean, we've had to come down here time and time again. This is not the first board that we've had to get in front of, okay, to try to say, "I don't want to do this for a living." Okay? We sure as heck don't want to hire representation to get involved in the courts. Okay? And that's what this is coming to, because it's gone way too far. I just, this guy's intent is commercial. Okay? I'm sure you enjoy his tax exempt status. Okay? He has a business running at this place, and that's what he's asking us to do, is to make that okay. And it's not. Thank you.
My name is Harold Allison. My permanent home address is on Flat Hill Road in Lunenburg. I purchased property there 50 years ago. Recently, I am a homeless veteran for a legal problem with my daughter-in-law. I submitted some paperwork to all of you, and I need to make a small correction, if I may. I went to the Land Use Committee, or the Office, rather, Land Use Director, and the lady in the office there gave me what you're looking at. And on there, where it's marked Town Forest, in the section below that says 17.1, and below that it says 300W. The 300W belongs on the other side of the Holman Street where the other 300W is marked. My apologies. I was incorrect there. The word Town Forest is probably correct, but more accurately, that area enclosed right there is the Lane Property Acquisition, 168 acres. And the big area above that, next to the Townsend Line, I believe, is the Town Forest, the landlocked 400-plus acres of property. And again, my apologies. My memory is shorter than the lack of hair on my bald head, so if you're with your indulgence, I'll read my letter.
You may.
Thank you, sir. "I am a homeless veteran of the United States Air Force. I am presently privileged to not be on government assistance because Dr. Massey has allowed me to share his home. This week, I asked TJ Blauzer at the local Veterans Service if there was a list of people who allowed homeless veterans to share their home. There is not. So thank you, Mr. Darren Massey. First, I'd like to extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation for the service you have all given to this community." Following our excerpts from the Sentinel and Enterprise article on May 7, 2014, and in the typing letter, my emphasis added there for the capitalization and the underline and the bold, the article is entitled, "Land Late: Lane Land Described as Valuable Acquisition for Lunenburg." And again, these are just excerpts. "Purchase of a portion of the Lane property off Holman Street, 168-acre parcel, a budding conservation land that is now landlocked and inaccessible to the public, is a special property that would be too good to pass up." Open Space Committee member Brandon Kibbe said during a lengthy presentation at the town meeting on Saturday, that was in May of 2014. "Nobody spoke against the proposal, and the motion passed unanimously on a loud-voice vote, drawing enthusiasm, enthusiastic applause, and a standing ovation from the crowd. Tracing the genesis of the proposal, the Lane property came on the market consisting of about 308 acres on both sides of Holman Street near the Townsend Line. That property has been in protection as open space for years," Kibbe said, "including wildlife habitat, a cold-water aquatic habitat, and a high-quality water in 1.25 miles of Mulpus Brook bordering the property, road frontage for a visitor parking area and a wooded lot in addition, and public access to the 458 acres of conservation land in large forest." That is the Lane property that's adjacent to 300 Holman. "In addition to conservation perks, the 168 acres that the town wants to buy has everything the Open Space Committee covets, and then some. Town ownership of the 168 acres would ensure that it won't be developed. A lot of houses could have been built on that land, costing the town substantially more in services than it would reap or receive in tax revenue from new residents." My personal comments to follow. According to the zoning map of Lunenburg, which I just showed you, all the property, 140-acre acres owned by Dr. Massey at the addis of 300 Holman, is in the outlying district. The word residential has been used multiple times in all these conversations, but according to the Land Use Director, residential designation for the outlying district has only been recently added to the outlying district definition. With a small exception, about 1,900 feet along Route 13, which is Chase Road, listed as LB/R equals Limited Business Residential District. That is a small strick of land on Chase Road, across the street from West End Auto, which And there's also a small exception of a small piece of frontage at the west end at the intersection of Holman and North Field Road, listed as RA equals Residential A District. A vast majority of the 140 acres that Dr. Massey owns is wooded and is described similarly as that has been in protection as open space for years, including wildlife habit, a cold-water aquatic habit, high-quality water in 1.25 miles of Mulpus Brook crossing. Mulpus Brook crosses and bordering the land. Mulpus Brook actually crosses Dr. Massey's land, and that's the area where a previous speaker mentioned about a, something being built across the bridge, which has been dismantled, and there's been no detrimental effects to that property because of that. Since he purchased his property, Dr. Massey has attempted to make his property available for the enjoyment of others in addition to himself. His purpose in purchasing the property was to ensure that it would not be developed, again, costing the town substantially more in services than the town would reap in tax revenue from new residents. At the last meeting of this zoning board, the excellent chairman expressed that there were several, if not many, complaints presented by some of butters and neighbors. The excellent buildings inspector also expressed the same complaint. In addition, there were many other people who expressed complaints, accusations, suppositions against Mr. Massey. However, I listened intently to every person speaking, but did not hear one piece of evidence to support those complaints, accusations, and allegations against Mr. Massey. I am personally very much supportive of the Constitution of the United States of America. The first in the list of the Bill of Rights is freedom of speech. The Supreme Court of the United States of America declared that almost any speech is protected, so anyone can make any accusation they choose. But we also have the rule of law, where people are innocent until proven guilty." The chairman here, by the way, at the last meeting, did indicate that it is not Mr. Massey's "We also have the rule of law, where people are innocent until proven guilty. Proof requires evidence, and I heard no evidence to support any complaints, accusations, and suppositions against Mr. Massey. I would like to show some evidence in support of Dr. Massey's efforts to use his property to the benefit and enjoyment of our whole community. Someone claimed that since 2014, there were 27 events. May 2014 through May 2019 is five years. A fifth grader can calculate that five years, five times 365 days in one year, equals 1,825 total days, plus one for leap year in 2016. Most events were three days or less, times 27, equals 81 total days in five years. But if each event were four days, times 27, equals 108 total days of events. And 108 total events in a total of 1,826 total days equals what percent of the total days in five years?"
Two and eight.
Again, a fifth-grade student could calculate, 108 divided by 1,826, equals 0.05915, equals less than 6% of the total days of five years for those events. Lunenburg population on Lunenburg map is 16,500. There were about 50 or so less people speaking against Mr. Massey at the previous meeting. Again, a fifth-grade student could calculate, 50 divided by 16,500, equals 0.0030, equals less than 0.3%, or 3/10 of 1% of the total population of the town of Lunenburg. I spoke recently with the town of Lunenburg Land Use Director. I understood him to tell me that the provisions to include designation of residential to the previously only designation of outlying district was made only in recent years. I fail to see how 108 days out of 1,826 is considered offensive, or detrimental, or excessive, or in violation of the zoning laws, or in violation of the rules of the Office of the Building Inspector for the town of Lunenburg. I have additional comments there, but I'm going to leave those off. Thank you all for the kind attention. I very much appreciate it. Any questions?
Question from the board?
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. On the Lockwood, 91 Main Street. So, as much as I've caught of this meeting, it has been a lot of talk about this one property, you know, 300 Holman Street. And just yesterday, I was at the select meeting, you know, talking about creating a precedent that actually applies to the entire town, and that's my concern. So I have some records, documentation about some of the complaints that Darren Massey has received from his neighbors. And it's a list, I think it boils down to 20-plus events and 29 events, and it's a list that the building commissioner refers to on his cease and desist letter. And I have a big problem with that. I think the building commissioner does have the right to send a cease and desist letter if he finds evidence of that, that has been violation, constant violation, and that's his only recourse. and that's his only recourse. But the 29 events that he lists as being the cause of that cease and desist letter includes a lot of events that I, as a homeowner, have the right to have in my house. And I think the Building Commissioner did a disservice to the whole process by not curating this list to only really include things that could be a violation. And things here involves, you know, inviting the Historic Commission to Darren's house. I live in a historical home. I would like to invite the Historic Commission over. Do I need a special permit for that? And I would like to say, hell, no. You know, having a juice party, do I need a permit to have a, I don't know, tapware part in my house? I don't think I should. You know, if I want to have a game night in my house, do I need a permit for that? No, I don't. And my neighbors may be inconvenienced by that. Maybe they will. Maybe there'll be cars parked on the street that they'd like to not be parked on the street. And, you know, and before I lived in Lunenburg, I lived in Somerville. And, you know, my neighbors did have game nights. It was every Thursday. And, you know, it was, there's no parking, there's no garage there. And it wasn't inconvenienced, but that's what it was. You know, it's something that I have had to deal with it. And if that's having inconvenience for me living in Lunenburg, I'm going to do what I did back then, 15 years ago, which is pack my bag and go find another place to live, because the burden is on me to, you know, do that. So I think it's very important to me that if the Building Commissioner sends a cease and desist letter to a resident, which includes meeting an elected public official in their house, that he does that very carefully so it doesn't infringe my rights. Because I don't want to be in a situation that, you know, my neighbors don't like me and they start calling the police. They start calling the police and reporting the fact that I'm going to have a meeting in my house. Because Darren's neighbors have done that. They have sent emails to the police saying, hey, I don't know if that is a problem, but Darren's having a meeting in his house on Sunday. So this has been a constant, through the history, this is last in half of some of the correspondence there has been. They have just pushed and pushed and pushed, and that is concerned. Do they have valid complaints? They do. But these 29 events are not, should not be the reason of the Building Commissioner exercising the power that he has. And that is my concern. He should not have done that. He should have curated here what is really a true violation and only sent the letter and referred to the letter to what is truly a violation on the zoning bylaws. Now, the special permit. The special permit has nothing to do with this board, per se. Because that is a special permit which has bypassed the zoning. Therefore, it lies with the selectmen. If it was something that relayed here, they would come to you for that request or the planning board, but it's not. And the reason for that, you know, the Building Commissioner is not asked to give his opinion when the selectmen is giving a special permit. It's just, it's not part of the process. So we have these things that keep, like, you know, building one on the other, and we need to separate this. That is the question of the special permit that relies within the Board of Selectmen, and they have the right to give that. And it's only a special permit because it's not allowable during regular zoning. So therefore, they need their special permit. The same way that, you know, Dragonfly Cafe just requested a one-day catering license. They needed that special permit. That lies with the Board of Selectmen. That is the question of, you know, do we need to change the bylaws? Does Darren want to change the bylaws? To allow certain things? That's a whole separate question. But we need to keep those things separate and putting all these things together, it just makes it that you're really, you know, regulating free speech through zoning laws. And I really don't like that. You know, until the age of 15, the president of my country was, my former country, was a general, and was that way since 1962 from a coup. So I'm very sensitive to that. I'm very sensitive to neighbors calling the police on your neighbors because they're going to have a meeting. USSR all over. So those things are just too thick. If we stick to the basics of it, is I, as a homeowner, have the right to do many of these things here. And the Building Commissioner should not have sent a letter referring these 29 events as the reason for his cease and desist letter. So I ask you guys, this board, to please, you know, ask the Building Commissioner to withdraw this letter and maybe draft a letter that's based on true and only violations of the zoning bylaw, so that you're not, you know, violating my rights as a homeowner to do what I want, what I'm allowed to do within my own home. So, is there any questions? According to previous hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? May I see?
Good evening. Thank you, Darren Massey, 300 Holman Street. As always, thank you for your work and thank you for your evaluation and investigation and adjudication. I just want to give voice to some of the things I heard tonight. I come from a background of truth and reconciliation. So from the first aspect, from the truth side, we've heard a lot of accusations. We've heard a lot of misinformation, in my opinion. Again, in my opinion, from Mr. Bowen's letter, there's reference to the request for investigation and accuracy in the various material that's been portrayed, including the last speaker. And so just reiterate that facts do matter and facts that have been investigated matter. The word "fact" itself has been used over and over again. But if we could actually investigate when that word is being used, of what is true and what is truthful, and what really has happened in the past and what really is being asked for in the future. Just to pick up, in referencing the future events, we left last meeting with the open question of the photography event. Just reference it here for those who may not know that was withdrawn, that did not happen, with respect to your process, that the meeting was, this meeting was to be only after that event. However, there's the open question now of the two Pride events that have permits from the Board of Select People. Reference has been said from the truthful side of them seeking a safe space. So again, referencing what is a safe space. The property does provide a unique opportunity for this community of LGDP to hold a reasonable event. Again, reasonable, that's gone through all the vetting processes. To have approvals and contingencies placed on the permit, which will be complied with. And then from modification, moving from truth to reconciliation. An earlier speaker did speak about modifications. We all learn. I learn. My intent is to learn. My intent is to keep learning. I want to be a good neighbor. Reference Mr. Bowen's letter to request we return to the Building Commissioner's department, to his desk, that we sit around a table. He gave voice at the end of last meeting that were this to be withdrawn, that's what would happen. That seems to me a wise choice in this process, rather than escalation, as someone has referred to this evening. As regards reconciliation, I did mention at the previous meeting we had that I've been reaching out to many people for advice, for feedback of the last five years I've been here. Unfortunately, in my opinion, I have not been responded to by a select group of people. I continue to reach out. Prior to the last meeting, there was a request finally for myself to hold a charrette, which I agreed to. I offered various suggestions for mediators, professors, I mentioned last time from Pittsburgh State. I referenced respected people in this town that offered their services to be mediators. Once again, unfortunately, between our meetings now, that offer has been declined, with the feedback from them saying, well, we'll meet depending on what happens with the events of here tonight. So now I wait. I attend this meeting. I thank you for it. And then hopefully, if we return to the Building Commissioner, that offer for a charrette will be accepted and that we could actually have one, and we have facilitators. And that hopefully, reasonableness can prevail. The second point I'm familiar with from truth and reconciliation is empathy. So I just want to speak a little bit about empathy. Empathy for my neighbors. I voiced a little bit about empathy for my neighbors. I have empathy for my neighbors. I hope over time, it's been clear to yourself through various speakers here that I've demonstrated that and I will continue to demonstrate empathy. I value empathy and I wish to demonstrate that and model that. So I'm here today, holding the value of empathy for all of us, for my neighbors. I listen to them very carefully, out of respect. I also hold empathy for myself. I've been here five years. Received the first permit for Unifier. It had contingencies, complied with contingencies. With the element of empathy, we modified. We've applied for two permits here. We received the one for the photography event. I heard the request not to hold the event until this meeting was finalized. Canceled the event. Now I have two permits for a Pride celebration. It has contingencies. It has contingencies that department heads, including department heads that have written letters saying otherwise, that have signed off on those contingencies. And so, again, empathy for myself within all these contradictions. And so, as we go through this process of attempting to navigate with truth, with reconciliation, with empathy, and then lastly, with these contradictions of a reasonableness for the benefit of our residents in town. Not looking to escalate this. Again, open to any questions. I would like more than myself speaking to share that there are other neighbors on Holman Street that they could speak for themselves, forgive me for paraphrasing them, that they're fed up with having some of the neighbors here knocking on their door, asking for signatures and petitions and asking them to do things which they think are inappropriate. I'm very grateful. One of them is asked to go on the record. The letter was sent late today, so I'm imagining you don't have it, though. I would request to read it so that more words could be heard from others rather than myself.
You may.
Thank you. This happens to be a letter from Lynda Donalds, 492 Holman Street. She apologizes for not being here tonight. She teaches classes. In reference to the notification letter for this appeals meeting, it is my understanding there are two events of which separate permits were already approved. One event to take place Friday, July 19, the other Sunday, July 21, each to be held at the residence of Darren Massey located 300 Holman Street in Lunenburg. Each approval was given with a document stating this license is granted in conformity with the provisions of MGL Chapter 140, 182, and signed by representatives of our town's local licensing authority. I understand both of these two events are being held by the Nooco Pride, one date for hosting a summer cookout and the other date is for presenting an educational lecture with group discussion. It has also come to my awareness that some residents of Lunenburg have taken action against these events, thus resulting in the Building Commissioner's cease and desist order, effectively intending to shut down these two events and perhaps other future events at Darren Massey's property, which may not even yet be conceived. I was surprised at the cease and desist order because I personally anticipate that these events will not result in any notable disruption to the neighbor's property along Holman Street and surrounding areas, nothing greater than what disruption occurred during the day another neighbor held a sizable high school graduation cookout party. I don't think anyone in adjacent properties minded that one bit, rarely, even despite all the cars parked up and down the narrow street. Upon looking further into what specific reasons these certain Lunenburg residents gave for why they wished to put a stop to these two Pride events, well, I found out that their motivation was not actually based on any general event concerns, but rather the objections were quite specifically targeted, the Pride community itself, i.e. who Pride is and what they stand for. And I find it utterly appalling that the Building Commissioner would actually proceed with these residents' complaints by issuing a cease and desist order that is clearly based on discrimination, rarely. This is the year 2019 and we have various laws protecting the equal rights of our citizens, laws that make it illegal to discriminate against persons and groups based upon race, color, national origin, religion, age, sex, gender, sexual orientation, physical or mental disability, and reprisal. To issue a cease and desist order on this basis is illegal and no less an act that which has been taken by our own town's government. I urge the zoning board of appeals to very seriously consider the legal implications of this matter when making this decision tonight. Regardless of any residents' personally held opinions and beliefs, representatives of this town's government must take action that is clearly free of any discrimination or prejudice. And this includes the issuance or revoking of any event permits. These must be considered using the same legal standards. Regards, Lynda Donalds, dated today, 492 Holman Street. To reiterate my request, let us return to the building offices, Building Commissioner's office, sit around a table and come up with some reasonableness guidelines, avoid of contradiction. I'll ask Rob Bowen if he wishes to read his letter into the record from today, if I would like that in the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bowen, again. I don't really feel the need to read that whole letter into the record. You gentlemen have it. I'm not going to belabor it, but I do want to address some of the comments that I heard this evening. First of all, I want to commend some of the neighbors for coming up here and telling us very specifically what some of their issues have been with some of these events. Because that has gone further than the opinion from the Building Commissioner has gone. I heard tonight that there were concerns about events where tickets were being sold. That's something we can digest, something we can understand, something we could adhere to. If there was a determination of the Building Commissioner that things such as that constituted a commercial venture, we could conduct ourselves accordingly and avoid that. But he didn't do any of that. He didn't tell us ticket sales were a problem. I also heard from another one of the neighbors that they're not trying to stop all events. Well, that's good to hear, but that's exactly what the order of the Building Commissioner does. It says, you shall not have any events. That's not even what the neighbors want. We cannot tell from the four corners of that Building Commissioner's decision what he wants. There was also some discussion here tonight about a previous matter that came before this board, and I believe it was an application for a special permit that was withdrawn because the applicant didn't have all of the information that would be needed for the board to make that determination. It's just completely unrelated to the issues that we're here discussing tonight and it's not precedent for any of this. I also heard something very outrageous that really bothers me. I heard somebody stand up here tonight and talk about public safety concerns. And one of the examples they used to support their argument that there's a public safety concern is that some of the LGBT people who are involved in some of these events is that some of the LGBT people who are involved in some of these events felt threatened, have felt threatened enough that they have requested a civil rights investigation. And for somebody to stand up here and say that attacking those people who are trying to hold some of these events is an example of a public safety concern that should cause this board not to act is outrageous. You can't go around threatening people and threatening people's civil rights and claim that that's a safety violation. That's very troubling. I do want to more generally address the safety issues. I think Chief Sullivan's letter was mischaracterized. I think he spends a lot of time in his letter discussing issues that are completely unrelated to public safety, and I mean, he's entitled to his opinion about these matters just like any of us are, but when you focus on the public safety issues, in fact, he said almost just the opposite. "I didn't find any particular public safety issues with these proposed events." Then he expressed some amorphous undeveloped concern about what might happen in the future. As a matter of fact, he already gave his input to the Board of Selectmen relative to the public safety concerns for these proposed events in the context of the license applications, and those licenses were granted. He did not have any public safety objections to the particular events that were proposed. So I think, I mean, the letter speaks for itself, but I think it was mischaracterized. And I do still have a lingering concern about the abutters' comments that we still have not seen. I can't respond to comments that I haven't seen. I can't address comments that I haven't seen, and to the extent the board is going to rely on those as part of its decision, I'd like to somehow know what they are, and I don't know how best to address that.
They probably have everything right here.
They say it's copies of everything. Would you like the file, right, and would you like?
I'd be happy to just look at it while the meeting goes on, if that's acceptable, or...
Fine with me. I invited you the other day to come by, so...
Thank you.
Anyone else? The building commissioner would like to come up and speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to clarify a little of what you've heard tonight. You're right, I did write a letter two years ago, and I said that they could hold the Unifier event. What I did, though, at that time is I based that on information that was provided to me at that moment. I had met with Dr. Massey, and I said, "What is it that you're trying to do with your property?" And I said, "Also, I want you to write me something that shows me what it is you're doing there." And he did, and he says, you know, there were, some of the events he was holding were for his children, and they were having some friends over. He says, "But his wife liked to put these things on websites and stuff, so it made it look like it was more." So I said, "Well, okay." Trying to be reasonable, I said, "When I realized he wanted to hold multiple events there, I said, 'You really can't do that. Zoning doesn't allow it.'" But trying to be reasonable, I says, "Look, I think you can, in a residential zone, hold one event." And that's why I wrote that letter. However, since then, I've come across more information that wasn't provided to me at that time. I had learned since, and this will lead into the next part, back in 2015, they held another event, and they were charging $225 to $300 per person. It was also advertised at that time that this was a new, small retreat center. They were advertising it as a retreat center. And there were all their events that were being held there. They were caught, there were one that was a cost of $55 for attendance to it. Another one was $40 to $45 to attend it. If I had known that with the meeting that was given, we had, I would have said no to the Unifier. But I looked at it as a one-time event. I thought, "Well, okay, people can do their property and still thing. It also gave them some time to go, and if you want to try to change the zoning, meet with the planning board. Do it." Then it comes to the cease and desist. The cease and desist that I issued was based on a complaint from the neighbors. The neighbors, at first, came to me and said, "Well, they're doing bad stuff out there." I said, "Well, look, document it. Show me what it is that you think they're doing, and tell me, is it open to the public? Are there tickets? What are you doing?" That's what they did. They came back with a very long letter. This is where I found out about these events that had already been held. There were more events that were being held. In addition, at the time that the complaint, I learned there were three events that were being planned for this year, where 250 or 200 people were going to be invited to this event. I looked at the complaint in its entirety. I did not look at it and say, "Oh, you can do this, you can't do that." I looked at it globally, and I said, "What we have here is somebody that really has changes, trying to change his property to a resort, a retreat center." One of the ads, even when so far, as to call this, just a second, I don't have, it's a hotel, a hotel. That is a lot different than somebody running a little something at their house. They're trying to change this. When I looked at it, and I looked at its entirety, including the three events planned this year, it's clear to me that they've gone beyond what I think is appropriate for residential. It sounds to me more like it is outdoor entertainment, indoor entertainment. That's why I looked at that letter. People are saying, "Well, Gary's going to stop me from having a birthday party." Get real. Nobody in this town has ever received a letter from me saying you can't have a birthday party, or a graduation party, or friends over for a picnic. That has never happened. But if you came to me and said, "I want to open a retreat. I want to make my house a hotel instead of having people stay there, and I'm going to run all these events and have hundreds and hundreds of people there," I would say, "No, you're not going to do that, because I don't think that's allowed within our zoning." That's why I looked at it globally. I did not look at it individually and say, "Yes there, no there." You know, I had some people come to me and say, "Well, you got to tell me exactly what I can do with my property." I said, "I can't even begin to write a letter like that. You can do what's typical of residential." So I allow people to, you know, I can't even get into that kind of an argument. Can I, well, can I have a birthday party? You know, I can't do that. But when I looked at it in its entirety, I think this has gone way beyond. Now, the question was said, "Well, how many can we do?" I said, "Zero for this property, because they've already crossed the line. They've already running retreats. They've already converted. They're already doing something illegal. I can't say, 'Well, you're illegal, but you can keep doing the illegal.'" I say, "No, you got to stop." So they say I'm vague. I looked at it globally as well. I think they pretty much, everybody understands what it was that I had ordered the cease and desist for. Thank you.
Okay. So right now, your cease and desist is against the remaining events?
The, yes, as well as...
I mean, he can do anything any other resident can do in town. I mean, he can have a Super Bowl party, he can have a birthday party, he can have a wedding at his house. You're not cease and desisting anything that he does other than the special events.
The special events, and I used the history of the property to make that determination, just like I said before. I said, "You could have an event on your property. There's actually one scheduled in a few months. I don't have a problem. Somebody wants to do something that's only once, it's never going to happen again? I don't think that changes the use of the property. I just don't."
Okay. So you say you don't have a problem with that. You have the cease and desist in play, so at this point, you would have a problem with it.
I would, on this property, my cease and desist does a couple of things. You know, it recognizes the history. I ordered a cease and desist on this, but it also speaks of the future. If they come back and say, "Well, I now want to run another Unifier event." You know, if my determination is overturned, sure, go for it. Do all you want, because I can't stop it, because the board's saying that's approved. I am looking at the past, the present, and the future on this property.
Okay. So you're saying, and this is for anybody in town, this is any resident, so you're basically saying one-time events, conducted from time to time, but within frequency, don't really violate zoning?
As long as, I have to look at each one individually, I'd have to look at it. If somebody came to me and said, "Gary, I want to do this," I'd want to know the situation behind it. What are you doing? Why are you doing it? You know, I would look at that. You know, if somebody came to me and said, "Well, I want to have a one-time event that's three weeks long, and I'm going to run whatever," I'm going to say, "No." You know, I think that really goes beyond. So I have to look and give and take. I have to judge based on what happens at that moment, as I would for anyone.
Right. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for the building inspector. So, I mean, the bottom line is, I think we've talked about this before, one-time events with relative infrequency generally don't run afoul of zoning. The issue before us is that you had a complaint from neighbors that you investigated as the building inspector and have found that they have run afoul of the zoning based on an outlined district and what's permitted and what's not permitted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? Does, when the Board of Selectmen are going to look into offering a special permit for any event, do they solicit your opinion? I mean, we've heard that they've solicited the police chief, the fire chief, and all these other folks, but as the building inspector who looks over our zoning laws, do they ask you to present to them your opinion on special, on any special event done by the town?
Yes.
And did they, for the last, for the three that were, have been granted for the...
Yes.
And did you have issues at that time?
The, I've always kind of viewed as, one of the things, you weren't here at the last meeting, but one of the things that we've been faced more and more with as building inspectors, we're saying, we're being told to look at your law and your law only. I don't have the authority to enforce someone else. And the Board of Selectmen, even though they're the town fathers, they don't have jurisdiction over zoning. They can't sit there and say something. What they're looking at with entertainment licenses, they're looking at it narrowly within the scope of what they do. Now, I know they're, you know, I don't want to get too deep into that one, because I know some of the appeal deals with the issue of whether you can override a building commissioner that issues a cease and desist. I don't want to, I can't really get into that, because that'll be decided by someone else.
But I think what you're saying is that permitting and licensing are two separate issues.
I believe that it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no, I have no...
Because just like this board, the zoning board could tell somebody, "Yeah, you can do this on your property," and yet the license, the Board of Selectmen, may say, "No, we're not issuing an entertainment license." So they're two separate.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very much so.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. So from your perspective, I mean, you're basically interpreting the bylaw, which is written, I mean, one thing that I saw in your note, you know, any use not specifically listed or otherwise permitted in a district herein established shall be deemed prohibited, correct?
That is correct. And that's been well-established by law and by court cases, that we used to be able to, we used to say that, "Well, the Board of Appeals could issue a use variance." And now that's been very clearly understood that, you know, this board doesn't, you can't do that. So, yeah, it's a little different animal now, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay. I think you're very fine. Does anybody else have any questions for the building commissioner while he's here?
I think I'm good.
Then I'm going to cut it off, the public discussion, and I think we gave everyone a chance.
Thank you. Darren Massey, 300 Holman Street. What I heard was talk about the past, the present, and the future. The past has not been investigated to a point of reasonableness. The sense of that I was advertising a hotel prompts me to open my phone and show what Facebook does if you write something. There is only one determinant, an option for an event. There's not another option for a gathering or a group. It labels things as events. The Board of Selectmen have one process called a special event permit. That is their words. Those aren't my words. If the building inspector sees something written online that says hotel, those aren't my words. That's the Facebook algorithm speaking. I would request a more deeper and reasonable evaluation of what has gone on in the past. When I hear things like hotel and events and ticket prices, it would be reasonable for someone to assume that there's a hotel if they see those words. I certainly understand that. It would be reasonable for someone to assume that I'm running a commercial enterprise if they saw ticket prices, though that's not actually factual of what has actually happened at the property. It's not factual in the past, it's not factual in the present, it's not factual in the future. What's factual would be meeting again, like someone mentioned, the department heads, where I met with the department heads, but the building inspector was not there at those meetings. I'm more than happy to attend any meeting. I just need the opportunity. It's the opportunity that has been challenging. And so I ask for the opportunity to go back to the building inspector, to go back to the neighbors. It's been a long request for an opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
I have several times how much money you've brought in over these events. How come you've never disclosed it?
Can I ask, am I allowed to ask questions?
You're allowed to, please.
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to ask?
You may ask questions.
Okay. So can I ask that, you know, we've heard from others that there was a charge for some of the things that happened at your house? If I'm going to have people at my, if I'm going to have people at my house, I, you know, I don't have that idea of a thing. So I look at it as that, so you're telling, what you're just said to this board is that you have, other than the Unifier, you have never charged for anything at your house, other than the Unifier. You have never charged for anything that has happened at your house. I'm asking, that's a simple question.
The financials have come up for, people have come over to the house, and we've paid for food for them. We haven't paid for other services, we haven't paid for someone for profit, but to cover expenses.
So you have charged for people to come to your house to see, you have charged for the public to come to your house for something that happened at your house? I don't care if it's to cover expenses, it's a matter of you charge the public to come to your house, is the question.
I would not say that. I would say we have requested donations to cover the food and whatever the basic expenses were for those few hours. It has not been ticket prices, it has not been a business model, it has, this came up again when we requested the permit for the fundraiser for Pat Brody's and another shelter, and again, we reiterated then, it's a fundraiser, there's a donation box. Yes, people leave money, but it's like, it's like, I don't want to mention some of the other groups in town, but they're, leave a basket, and people put money there, people pay, I could think of a couple other examples in town, where people do leave money, but it's not a business, it's not an enterprise, it's purely to cover the basic expenses. And the comment that I heard in the background is that then it's implied that I'm making a profit. I'm not. I have given more money than what's been left in the baskets. I, I, I have given more money than what's, what's been left in the baskets. It's, it's under my own expense. And worth us to go further, I'm per, we could investigate that, that, that it's, it's by my own donation that I've done this. I haven't taken in more money. People have not, uh, uh, come to my place to, to offer me money that then I've pocketed for my own, for my own bank account. That has not taken place. I have contributed and paid and sponsored photography, sponsored a reasonable proposed Pride Festival. I apologize, let me not say festival for slip of the tongue. It's, it's not a festival. I was accused of having a festival. The festival is in Fitchburg on the Saturday. We're having a cookout Friday and a show on Sunday. Again, to go back to the building inspector, really needing to look at those actual things that the neighbors send him rather than just going on their word. I, I appreciate the question. Rather than just going on the word, Facebook just has the word festival, it doesn't have, uh, the options that we do, which are not a festival. It's a show. It's, and even a show, it's, it's a gathering of people, so I call it a gathering. And then that's misinterpreted.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Please. Um, when you solicit or mention things on Facebook, do you solicit a specific donation to cover expenses or something along those lines?
I don't.
So, so you're saying that it's never been, on social media, there has never been a dollar figure mentioned in one of your, one of your posting on social media, never has there been a dollar figure associated with that?
I don't mention it, though other people have designed posts which have needed to be refined, and so some people, that I've then critiqued, I've seen them come up and I've critiqued, and I said, no, that, that isn't what our intent is. The algorithm has turned it into something else, or they've written something which is not--
It's not, it's not an algorithm. If it's, it's not an algorithm, it's actually somebody has written--
Right.
--something there. So please don't use the word algorithm. Algorithm is something that happens because of a consistency--
Right.
--or somebody, somebody has put it in. So this has been, somebody has put down that if you want to go to this event, event, you need to, this is the suggested donation, and if you don't get, you know, that you have to provide.
Right. So one, it's never been have to provide. There have been, I could think of-- I could think of three where we have requested what I consider a donation and has been an amount, $10. I could remember there was one, uh, for 45, but it's not, it's, it's not exclusive. If those people come, and we, I know who they come, I know who those people are, they are, they're, they're not excluded based on not paying a ticket price. There's no ticket price. There's no financial price of entry. For me, there's a, for those three, suggested donation, and they cover, whatever they cover, and I pay the additional. I've never made more money than what I've needed to pay for basic catering from our local businesses, to provide for lunch, library, whatever. We don't have, I could, don't have to go into the actual events unless you want to, but whatever.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Um, so have, have you, you know, you talk about reasonableness and, you know, trying to be a good neighbor and common ground. Have you tried to go to the planning board to change the bylaw to, to allow such events, such as yours, in the district in which it's in?
Right. And that itself is also a process. And so, yes, I've spoken to several people, and that's a process and challenge.
And I, I know that.
And so, absolutely.
I mean, you, you understand that the, the board is here to interpret the bylaws as it stands today--
Mm-hmm.
--um, and that, you know, obviously, to change it, it's either through the planning board or town meeting or, um, you know, I, I think that, I, I, you know, from my dealings with the building inspector, I would never consider him unreasonable to, uh, someone who is a taxpayer in town. But you can see his, his point where they have, neighbors have called and he has, you know, an obligation to investigate calls, just as if we had given a special permit to somebody, and, and that special permit, they were, they were, um, going against the conditions of the special permit that this board put on it. He would investigate it and come back to this board and say, you know, they're violating the conditions of the special permit, in which case, you know, we would investigate it and say, okay, are they violating the conditions? And, you know, we would see that through. I, I think, I, I have no doubt that what you're trying to do on your property, and by all means, I mean, 140 acres is a big, it's a big piece of property, you should be able to do what you want.
Well, I don't, I don't want to do what I want, I just want the building inspector to see what's really going on there.
But the bylaw, but the bylaw says you can't do it. Whatever you're doing there, the bylaw says you can't do it. And, and, in, in the bylaw, it says, you know, 250, 4.1B. If, if, if it's not specifically listed in the bylaw, you can't do it. And, and I, I haven't found, I looked through the bylaw, um, and I've been on the zoning board for a while, I combed through it to find if I could find something that would be relevant to what you're trying to do, and I wasn't able to find it. And therefore, based on the bylaw, if we're interpreting it as it's been written, it's prohibited. And, and as much as I'd like to help you, and I understand what you're trying to do, you know, the only ways that you can change that are going to the planning board and changing the bylaw, or, you know, town meeting, and, you know, I think you should be able to do what you want on your property, but there is a certain point where it's prohibited. And, and, um, I don't know else, how else to say it to you. Uh, I, I feel bad that, you know, these events that you have, and I think you're trying to be a good neighbor, but it says you can't do it.
I'll go along too with that and say, you know, it's not within our purview.
Why don't we wait till we bring it back to the board?
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut off the public discussion. We've, we've had a lot of public discussion, we've received lots and lots of material. Um, I, I, is it something you just reviewed in there? There's something new?
Let me just return in a second.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, yeah. I, I, I appreciate that you want to cut off public discussion, and it's totally your prerogative, but based on what I just heard from the, the building inspector and the interpretation of some members of this board, in my opinion, your legal interpretation of the, the zoning bylaws is headed off the rails here, and I'd like to address some of the comments.
Um, okay. We really haven't brought it to this board, discussed it, made any motions, so I'm not saying that we can't be off the rails at this point.
It, it, it's completely up to you, but I think some members of the, the board are interpreting use in the zoning in a way that, that just doesn't make sense and conflating a zoning use with somebody colloquially using their property. Uh, there are 100 things that happen all over the place, weddings, baseball games, there's 100 things that happen on properties that are not mentioned in your zoning ordinance. So if, if you're looking for a specific thing to be mentioned in your zoning ordinance, it's, that's not how it works.
I'll, I'll let you address that, if you would like.
Thank you. Uh, and, and specifically, the, one of the examples that the, the building official used was the, the, the notion that in some zones, outdoor entertainment and indoor entertainment are specifically permitted. Though, those are zoning uses we're talking about, skating rinks, baseball fields, theaters, structural uses that operate on a property 365 days a year. Because somebody gets a one-off entertainment license and has a band on their property doesn't make that a outdoor entertainment use as that word is understood in zoning, they're just, they're just two separate things. And, uh, and I've heard a lot of comments and questions asking the building inspector what he meant by his order, and I've heard some very good questions from board members drilling down into what's prohibited and what's not prohibited, and a big sticking point seems to be ticket sales and taking in money. If the order had said ticket sales in a commercial enterprise and taking in money is prohibited because that's commercial activity in a residential zone, again, that's something we could understand. But if he has to come up here and explain what his order means, I don't know how you can uphold it. You've got to, you've got to look at the four corners of that order, and it just, it, the paper that he wrote does not say what he says it said. And we ask you to reverse it and send it back for an order that we can conform our conduct to. He's, he's punishing this applicant. He said the Unifier event was a commercial enterprise. That happened in 2017. How, how long does the property have the scarlet letter? When, when does he get off probation? When can he start doing things again? That's not how zoning works. It's not, it's, it's not a historical, oh, the property once had a violation and had a commercial event, and so forever it's barred from doing things. That zoning is prescriptive about what you can do, it's, it's not supposed to be punitive, and his order just doesn't tell us what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm gonna cut off public discussion. Um, I'm gonna bring it to the board. Um, I know it's been suggested that maybe we, you know, kick the can down the road and, you know, let people mediate, but we really don't have the authority to do that. We can't tell people you have to go and negotiate, or not, not in my opinion. Um, so I don't want to kick it down the road, I want to, to, uh, bring it to the board and come to a decision. Um, because basically what happens is, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that go into our decision, and, uh, they're based in zoning. They're not based on the events, they're based in zoning. Fact, I, I heard a lot of things about the money and all this, but I think that there is a, a lot of different factors that go into it. It's the frequency, it's the number of events, it's the length, uh, it's with or without entertainment licenses. Is it, is it open to the public? Not open to the public. Do they charge a fee? Don't they charge a fee? There's all kinds of things that go into our decision, but no one of them says this is, this is what we're looking at. We're looking at zoning, how do all of these things, how does all of this input that everybody has given us, how do they affect zoning, and can he or can he? Does the zoning allow it or doesn't it? And who makes that decision? And what happens is, it, it has to go, when it's, you know, it depends on the issues and the happenings of these events, when does it change residential to non-residential? Um, and that determination has to be made by somebody, and the way it works is the building commissioner has to make that determination and that call, and it's a judgment call. So you brought all of the, the information before us, and, uh, I think now what we gotta do is, we've got to deliberate and ask for a motion so that we're not kicking it down the can. Um, and again, any decision we make can be, can be, uh, brought to the superior court. So whatever we do, um, that's like the, the three things. It's first, first it's the building commissioner, now we're the next step, and there's still another step after this. But I just want to explain what, what we do up here. And with that, I'll bring it to the board.
Can I ask Lisa if she has a copy of the specific appeal to the zoning board that Mr. Massey brought to us? I don't have a formal copy of it.
The application?
Could you read, read the request that we're making a decision on?
It's a person aggrieved.
Yep.
You, you did have a copy.
It's an appeal from a person aggrieved, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8, Zoning Board of Appeals. And they are appealing from the March 18th, 2019 determination of the building commissioner.
Okay.
Did you?
That's, that's sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, I would open it up to the board for discussion.
I don't have a problem at all with the, I, I've hosted several events at my house myself, too, and even charging monies or something like that, we usually pool resources to pay for any expenses that we've had along the way, and that's it. Um, that's, I think, a normal way of reacting to a lot of different situations. I do think there are many different menus or venues in town where it's appropriate to have, um, multiple events or such things, and I don't believe a large number under the existing law, uh, regulations in zoning, bylaws and so forth, allow for such large number of venues or anything like that.
Any other discussion from the board?
I just have one comment, I guess, I, I feel like the word event is being used in way too broad of a, a, a spectrum. Like, I, I feel like, right now, hearing all this event is having my mother over for dinner and, you know, hosting the Winter Classic for the NHL next year at my house, and I feel like it's, like, we're just saying that everything is, is an event, and I, I feel like that, to me, like, an event is, you know, like, something that's advertised, but not, like, having my friends from high school over. And so I, I feel like that term is kind of maybe being used way too broad.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else?
I guess, I guess the question is, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, are these, um, gatherings at the property, their frequency, are they considered more commercial, uh, than residential? And if so, in the residential district, it's not allowed. In the outlined district, it's not allowed. Commercial, commercial, commercial events or commercial gatherings or commercial entities are not allowed in the outlined district based on what the, what the bylaw says.
And, Mr. Chairman, there's been, if I may, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about further investigation, and I, I could understand if we want to have further investigation, but I would, I would see, I would see that, um, that it, while you're having investigation, you don't keep doing something that's being investigated. So, you know, while investigating a murder, I don't keep murdering folks and things like that. I know that's the extreme, but I look at it as, if, if they want to have further investigation, and I personally feel that this is more of a, uh, something that should be taken by the planning board as well as the, as, and it has to be a change to the bylaw, but the fact of the matter is, is that I do feel like while there's an investigation, there should, there shouldn't be anything happening right now at that, at that day. If there has to be, if there was something, and giving the building inspector, the land you supervisor, a chance to investigate both sides of this and to come to a conclusion.
Okay. Thank you.
And, as I was gonna say before, I wanted to mention that it's not within our purview to set guidelines or to mention regulations or to tell someone what they can or cannot do. It's our inter, our position to interpret what's already there in print, period. Um, we had a situation earlier where someone wanted to set up a business in town, and she was asking us to set guidelines, and it, we just asked her to withdraw without prejudice while she pursued that situation and then come back to us with her, uh, requests for what the guidelines that she wanted to live with for her personal business, and--
And, 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 Mr. Chairman, on that note, I remember when Mr. Massey approached us several years ago, we had asked that--
ago, we had asked that same thing. We had asked to set, to, when he came to talk to us, to go and put some guidelines together, and have not ever heard anything since then. So, you know, I do agree that, you know, there, there needs to be some, some, we don't have a, we're looking at the guidelines that are set in front of us, and that's about all we can do.
Correct, okay. All right, any other discussion? Okay, um, I, I do want to point out that, that if, when a motion is made, when a vote, uh, vote comes, to over, if it's to overturn the building commissioner, you need four out of five. This is a super majority, okay? If the vote is to uphold the building commissioner, you need two out of five. Because again, it's a super majority.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we uphold the, the building inspector's interpretation of the cease and desist order on 300 Holman Street.
I have a second.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. We are, um, upholding the building commissioner's decision on the cease and desist at this point. I will point out that a copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days, and any party that is agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. And we thank you all for coming.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we, the jury?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With this, the hearing is adjourned.